This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Clerk. I think I'll repeat that and all the recording is on. Today is Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. I'd like to call this evening's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the police.
Of the United States of America. For which this stands.
With liberty and justice for all.
Semper Fi.
I've Semper Fi, Dennis.
Do I have the real?
Councilmember Both.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
And Mayor Thornton.
Present. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. I do have a proclamation that I'd like to read this evening. Proclamation declaring May 2021 to be Building Safety Month in La Center. Whereas our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure. Every day and in times of natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of building safety. Building. Yeah, Clerk, if you could please mute everybody. Building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry who work to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the Washington Association of Building Officials and International Code Council, which brings together expert local, state, and federal officials to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us and the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas our nation benefits from using the international codes, which are voluntary consensus codes and standards that include safeguards to protect the public. And whereas prevent, prepare, protect, building code saves. The theme for Building Safety March 2021 encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety, and training the next generation in new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local and state departments. Now therefore, I Greg Ford, Mayor of the City of La Center, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Building Safety Month in La Center, and I encourage all people in our city to join me in this special observance. Adopted this 12th day of May 2021 by La Center City Council. Council, can I get a motion to adopt this proclamation declaring May 2021 to be Building Safety Month in La Center?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Adopt proclamation declaring May 2021 to be Building Safety Month in La Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comments for this evening's meeting?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. Next is the mayor's report. I have just two quick announcements this evening. First, our next city council retreat will be next Tuesday, May 18th, beginning at 5:30 PM. Excuse me. On the agenda, excuse me. On the agenda for our next city council retreat, we will have our three representatives from the 18th District joining us, Senator Ann Rivers, Representatives Brandon Vick, and Representative Larry Hoff. So it'll be an opportunity for the representatives in the center to, Senator, to give us an update on the 2021 legislative session, and then they'll be available to answer any questions that the council may have. So I'm looking forward to that. It's always a great meeting when we get to meet with our legislators.
Mayor, will that be in person or is that going to be virtual?
Well, it's going to be a virtual. Yep. Still all virtual meetings. Call some numbers.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other announcement I have is that my next mayor's town hall will be Thursday, June 3rd, and it will begin at 5:30. So I am moving the date from Wednesday to Thursday, and it'll be Thursday, June 3rd. That's all I have this evening. Next is the attorney's report. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public. At our last council meeting, I reported to you that we were going to have a hearing on the Riverside Estates receivership proceeding, and the city had filed a motion to require the receiver to either assume or reject the development agreement that had been entered into between the developer of the property and the city in 2019. The bad news is that due to technological problems with the county's IT system, that hearing didn't happen. The good news is the fact that we brought the motion and pressed the receiver to take a position. He has acknowledged that he is going to assume that development agreement. So that's positive in that it clarifies many of the terms and conditions that are going to apply to the development of Riverside Estates. We are still working on negotiating an amendment to the development agreement. You'll recall in June of 2020, you considered an amendment that was conditionally approved on the condition that the developer obtained permits for the development of the Phase Four Park and that they obtained a performance bond. And so in the interim, the developer has been applying for the permits to develop the park. There's been a lot of progress in obtaining those permits or approvals. And we are still working on updating some of the amendments to reflect things that are now in effect with the receiver having control of the property. But I am sure Mr. Swanson will update you more on Riverside Estates. But progress is being made on nailing down the terms of the development approval for that subdivision. The only other thing I have to report, Mayor, is that it's now been just slightly over a year that I've been your city attorney, and I just want to express my appreciation for that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bronson, and thank you for the great service that you're providing to the city as well. We appreciate it. Any questions for the city attorney this evening? Council? Okay, not hearing any. We'll move on. Next, our council comments. Councilmember Both.
I have nothing to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing, I just want to thank you and the chief for hammering out that agreement with Washougal for providing police coverage for our town. It's, we want to keep our citizens secure as possible, and again, I think that's a good move, and I'm glad Washougal was able to help us out. Thanks again.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Strobin?
I have nothing to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Servini?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to encourage everyone to get out there and get their vaccinations if they haven't already. Help our county move forward and our state in terms of the number of people totally vaccinated. And get COVID behind us.
I agree with that. Thank you. And finally, Councilmember Hill?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and welcome, everyone. I usually report on the Ridgefield Port District meeting, but today I was en route from Eastern Washington back home, so I missed that meeting. So I'll try to get an update and do a report at our next meeting, but other than that, I have nothing else, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, and welcome home.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda are staff reports. We do have two staff reports this evening, and the first one's for the Police Department, and interim Chief Richardson will be presenting. Chief?
Good evening. Hope everybody enjoyed their day. For the, I'm going to go over the April 2021 report for the Police Department. In April 2021, as far as reported crimes, we had a pretty light month. We had six reported crimes. One residential burglary, two thefts of motor vehicles, two other thefts and a vandalism. The residential burglary was a door pry to a door where they did not gain entry. And so that was a good thing for the homeowner. We had two thefts. One was a smashed window on a vehicle where they took a wallet and some change. And the second one, if you're not aware of it, you know, like every other communities, we have problems with mailbox thefts, especially the gang boxes where people just come in and pry multiple mailboxes at one time. Well, they're getting creative, but it looks like they stole the entire block of mailboxes. So that way they can take it somewhere else, and instead of prying each door, they can unbolt it and carry it away. So that occurred. I haven't seen that before, but nothing surprises me. We had two auto thefts again. One was a vehicle from a driveway. The other was an ATV from a driveway. Finally, the vandalism was a foster child that damaged a, some walls in her bedroom. And that takes care of, as far as reported crimes. The property heat map, I apologize, is a little bit different this month. It really doesn't have a lot of crime on it, so would take that into consideration. I had a problem with the base map on the other map, so I tried using this one. Still trying to get it, tweak it, so you can actually see some more detail. So it is a work in progress, but I can tell you that the little orange and yellow area that you see is generally where all of our crime is occurring for the most part in La Center. It may move a couple streets in one direction or the other, but primarily that's where everything that we've had has been occurring. Luckily, we had very few thefts of motor vehicle this month, so that kind of helped us. The other thing that probably impacted us as far as crime was the fact that currently drug possession is legal, so our officers aren't making drug possession arrests, which does impact our crime stats. We had three arrests in the month of April, one for drunk driving, one for vandalism, the one I mentioned before was a juvenile that was referred to court. So that is stated as an arrest, but it's just a referral and obstruction where an adult was given a ticket for obstruction on a call within the city of La Center. Calls for service, as you can see, they're pretty consistent. We had 96 community-initiated calls in April, which was down from March. March was 143, it went down to 96. You, 120 for police-initiated calls that actually dropped in April to 112. In total was 208 this month versus 263 last month. And again, there's, you know, reasons for that. Number one is obviously we have less officers working the field, so that's going to reduce, generally going to reduce, the police-initiated activity. And then the fact again that narcotics laws have been repealed currently, so that kind of hurts us as far as being able to stop people and make arrests and those kinds of things. And the monthly comparison, you can see that compare April 2020 to April 2021, not much of a difference, actually. If you look at both last year and this year in April, we had 203 total calls for service last year. We had 208 this year. And officer-initiated activity was 109 last year. It actually went up to 112, and then community-initiated calls were just between, went from 94 to 96. So our stats are pretty consistent month to month when we do comparisons for right now. Once everything gets wide open, we'll see how things go. And as far as monthly reports by source, again, total reports were 40 reports in April, 31 of which were community-initiated reports and nine were police-initiated reports. This is the next page is just an update of, or I was curious where this bill was, this Bill 5476 that's on the governor's desk. It's actually going to be signed tomorrow, May 13th, and this will make drug possession illegal again. However, it's a little bit of a different kind of a bill. You will look at it, and you will actually read it. It's kind of convoluted, kind of complex. It's a lot of pages. But at the end of the day, law enforcement, we're required to give them two diversions in lieu of booking them in jail or referring the case to the prosecutor. So we're going to stop somebody. They're going to have narcotics on them. We'll take the narcotics. We'll take a police report, and we'll divert them into the system. They get up to two diversions. We don't have to do a third, but then when it ultimately gets to the prosecutor, they can also do diversion. So this is kind of going to be kind of a complex case. We're trying to figure out a law, how we're going to make it work. One of the issues, obviously, is there's funding in the bill to actually fund these external services that we refer people to, but they're not in place yet, so we're going to have to obviously get the funding in place and ramp that up, because as you refer more and more people to enter these services, they've got to have the services there. And so they're going to have to play catch-up a little bit. The second thing that's a little bit different is somebody just texted me. That threw me off. So anyway, the other thing that's different, obviously, in addition to these referrals, is since we're not booking somebody into jail and we're not taking their fingerprints, they don't have a criminal history, so there's no centralized database yet where we can go and search to see if we've had, how many referrals somebody's had. We'll be able to tell whether or not we've had a referral within the department. And then since we have consolidated record system, we, in county, we can kind of use that to see if somebody's had a diversion somewhere else in the system. But the question is going to be if somebody from out of the area, in, out of, you know, up from the Seattle area, they're in the town from another state, whatever it is, we're not going to be able right now to tell how many diversions they've had. So somebody's going to have to figure out that system and get that in place, so we have some kind of system to search to see if it's a diversion or how many diversions they've had. And the next thing that's going to require, which is another, is more training. So basically, it says that the people that are in the basic law enforcement academy are going to have to get additional training on how to interact with persons that are under the influence of drugs or have co-occurring substance abuses or mental health conditions. Obviously, part of the problem with that is although this law mandates this training in the police academy for new hires, it'd be remiss if you didn't provide the same training to your lateral, your current police officers. So ultimately, what we're going to have to do is once the academy, the training center, put this training together, however many hours it is, more than likely, we're going to have to be required, or at least it would reduce our liability if we do a similar training for people that we already have employed. So that's something, again, when I keep talking about these bills coming down and where we need to do training, that's just something that we have to figure out how we're going to do. And then next page again is just an update. If you saw, I believe it was a reflector in the Colombian, a lot of articles, not only in those papers, but nationwide. Battleground had a recent article about all the catalytic converters getting stolen. And the other event that we have on Saturday night, May 15th, that's National Police Week, and this is our candlelight memorial to the police officers that have been killed in the line of duty, be down at the bridge. It starts at 8:45 PM, so I encourage people to get down there early. And I think it's a wonderful way to show support, not only for the La Center Police Department, but, you know, just all the police officers, national, nationwide, and the sacrifices they've made. Obviously, it's been a bad week. For law enforcement, we had two officers that were shot within the last 24 hours. Within a 24-hour period in California, shot and killed, and we had two more in the state of Texas that were shot and killed. So it's just something important to remember that there are people out there and families that have given the sacrifice. And one of my academy classmates, Officer Reedy from West Covina Police Department, he and I went to the academy together, and he was shot and killed about four years later. And a young, young man that didn't get the opportunity to grow old. So with that, I have concluded my report.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions for Chief Richardson this evening?
Yeah, actually, I have a couple. Didn't we have a drug bust in town? There was a lot of officers down below, and I thought was it a drug bust or?
That was the, that was, that was recovered stolen vehicle that the Sheriff's Department did. I think the social media said it was a drug bust, but the only thing that I could find on that street was a recovered stolen vehicle, and that's the area where the obstruction arrest came from.
Okay, okay. I was wondering, I've seen, I actually seen police, so my second question is, is I read that law that you were briefing us on, and I, my understanding was that you guys were still going to be able to arrest people, and then it would be turned over for diversion and such with the prosecuting attorneys, so they would be able to at least get fingerprints, right? Is that not the case?
No, the law specifically states that unless, unless they've changed it since the last time I read it, that it's basically, in lieu of jail booking, so the person shall be offered a referral in lieu of jail booking and, and a referral to the prosecutor. So neither one of those is going to occur first. So it won't be till the third time where you can treat it like it's still going to, and it's still going to just be a misdemeanor. It's not going to be a felony or gross misdemeanor. It's just a misdemeanor. So at the end of the day, the way I, the way I'm reading it is they get bites at the apple before they ever get booked or that case actually gets referred to the prosecutor.
Wow, okay. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, this is Doug. What time is the gathering at the bridge on Saturday night?
The candlelight starts at 8:45 PM.
8:45?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the chief this evening? Okay, Chief, thank you. Great report. So next staff report we have this evening is the Public Works staff report, and the Public Works Director, Matt Jenkins, will be presenting. Matt?
Yeah, sorry, it takes a minute to ramp up when I turn the camera on. Good evening, Mayor Council, citizens. I've got the May report. I'll start with Public Works operations, street facilities. Annual maintenance and service on all the city vehicles and equipment has been completed. That's an ongoing process. The staff starts that in about November and completes it in about April, right when the weather turns, so kudos to them. It was quite a bit of maintenance this year. Public Works continues to work on keeping city properties maintained during the system's clear throughout. The crews continuously monitoring and repairing potholes throughout the city along with any other road hazards. That's ongoing. That's going to be on my report every month. The community is, the community center remains closed due to COVID-19. Playgrounds and public restaurants have been opened. We are asking that residents limit bathroom use to one person at a time and wear masks right there, just in case. We've got signage posted on the bathrooms accordingly. For stormwater, Public Works has finished replacing the damaged stormwater outfall on East Fourth and Cedar. And they also had to add rock area from erosion that was right by City Hall. It was a pretty major outfall, a large project. They did amazing job on that. Just kudos to them. The one sentence I haven't heard about it just doesn't speak enough to it. And, you know, we shall be proud of what they did to prevent the erosion and then repair the system. Our La Center staff and Clark County continue to work together in conjunction with Ecology on tracing stormwater issues within the city in parks and grounds. Unfortunately, Battleground and Clark County Work crews remain unavailable. It's not so much due to COVID phasing at this point, but they just can't get enough people in the vans. It's, it's more social distancing, so I guess it is COVID phasing, but at the same time, they're, they're having people, they're sending out crews, but it's only three or four at a time, and for us, that's just not, it's not economical or feasible. So for us, they remain unavailable. Staff's continued improvements under the bridge on the Upper River Bank. I'd like to give kudos to Dave Pettit on that. He expanded, he came up with a plan to expand the parking area. They put in doggy bags. Again, like I said in previous reports, Eagle Scout built some tables for us, for some picnic tables for a project, and it's just turned into a really, really neat area for, I think we're into it about $3,000 at this point over two years. So just kudos to Dave Pettit for having the vision for that, seeing it through, and it's just been a really neat thing to be part of. Mowing schedules have increased. The staff is now mowing on a warm weather schedule. We have a super dry April. The more sun we see, the crazier it's going to get earlier in the year, and those guys are going full tilt now with the mowing. On the south side, currently all staff are working normal shifts. All appropriate safety precautions are being followed. The lead maintenance worker, Aaron Wilkinson, he'll be attending CDL training next week. Mid-month when I wrote this report, but it'll be next week, and so he'll be marked up with his CDL likely a week from Monday. So that's pretty exciting. The seasonal maintenance worker started on May 10th. I'd like to give a little information on him. His name's Cade Ledwith. We're excited to have him. He's got a CDL as well. He spent six years in the Marine Corps working on generators, and he also was a sign apprentice, worked at sign shops for several years, and a, I believe, a carpenter apprentice. So we're excited for his skill set, and he's excited to be here, and I'd like to welcome him aboard. On the project side, no capital projects currently at this time for the group. On the wastewater operations group, under operations, needed permits limits. The biosol shipments continue on a normal weekly delivery schedule, though ALMA is sending one shipment every other week. That's going to be the new normal for now. Staff's working with Prime Solutions and Owens Equipment on optimizing the rotary fan press. And the goal is to increase processing capacity and find efficiencies. So yeah, we're just looking for new and innovative ways to do more with, with what we have, and that, that you know, PLC programming through things like that. So pretty excited to work with those groups and see what we can accomplish. On the maintenance side, routine preventative maintenance is always ongoing. Wastewater and Public Works operations have completed repairs on all city emergency generators. Generator needed quite a bit of work. I think we got a five or $6,000 quote for the repairs. And Public Works Ops and Wastewater did the repairs for about $500 in parts. So them, we got a $2,000 repair quote for the City Hall generator, and I think Public and Wastewater got that repaired for about $120 in parts. So, you know, hats off to the skill sets that we have here in town with those two groups and their ability to get things done. On the outside, the April discharge monitoring port is being compiled, prepared for submission to Ecology. Laboratory benchmark testing is being finalized. We have one test left to complete and turn in, and that's chlorine. Once that's done, then we're going to continue with the laboratory accreditation renewal process through the Department of Ecology, and that'll make sure that we can continue to process samples in our laboratory for one year. That's an annual renewal process. Staff's currently working regular shifts, but maintaining That's an annual renewal process. Staff's currently working regular shifts, but maintaining social distancing practicing, practices. Projects on the horizon, the automation group has started work on a SCADA overhaul project. This one upgraded control software for the treatment plant and a more emergency auto dialer for after-hours alarms and an updated server. Is what they found, just to give you a little more background on the emergency auto dialers. What they found is the most sophisticated auto dollars that can go to your mobile phone. They can go to your P C. They can contact you on all these multiple medians. They are insecure and so sometimes simple is better. And so going back to the old, it'll call you when there's a problem type of dialer is actually what they're recommending. I know Department of Energy is recommending that. A lot of, lot of large, larger infrastructure is going to go back to that. So the automation group recommended that. So it looks like maybe a step backwards in technology, but it's actually a step forwards in security. So we're pretty excited about that. Building Department, permanent construction progressing at a strong rate. Staff's consumption average of twelve fifteen stops per day, forty inspections. Though I know Jim had, Jim Perry, the building official, had two days this week already with twenty-plus stops. Single-family residential planner view times, it says here currently two weeks when I wrote this last week, but those are actually three weeks right now. So that's including three to five days in quarantine as well still. So staff's taken in forty single-family building permit application, applications since the start of the year as of last week. And the new middle, middle school project continuing to increase its need for building inspections and staff time both on the infrastructure side and the inspection side. So that's also eating into some of that review time. There are shifts due to COVID-19, but the office space remains closed to the public without appointment. And that's all I have for the public.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Matt this evening?
Matt, do we have any plans of opening up the splash pad and that stuff at the park this summer? Is that on the agenda? It is. I've spoken with Ops, we're in the equipment. We're keeping an eye on it. In our current phase, I think we'll be able to do it. So yeah, great question. I think we're going to go ahead and do it. So. I'm getting asked by a lot of parents down at the ball field. So that's why I wanted to see. Hot topic last year, boy. Yeah, we, we want to get it done and you know, it's, what do we need to do to notify? Put out noticing for, obviously for parents to be informed and will they pay attention to it? But as of right now, we plan on proceeding with it.
When you, when you plan on turning that on, isn't that the last day of school or something?
Yeah, it's right after the last day of school. Funny enough, we've had students show up to school if we've turned it on early soaking wet. So we try to do it at school after school ends.
Matt, Mr. Randy, you mentioned Dave Pettit. I saw him mowing the other day at the end of the bridge and I stopped and really complimenting him on the project that he'd worked on. I know you mentioned his name and I mentioned it before, but getting the chance to talk to him for five minutes, you know, in the field, it was good. And he, he was very, very proud of that project.
Yeah, yeah, he, he should be. He, he put a lot of thought into it. Like I said, it was his vision. I love to give credit where credits do and he deserves a lot of credit on that.
That's, that's going to be enjoyed this summer, probably even enjoyed today with eighty degrees. Anyway, good job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Matt, this is Dennis regarding the, again, the area under the bridge where it's been modified and for additional use and the, the tables as such. Just a question, as we move through the summer, obviously, and then move into the, the fall and the water starts rising up, then those tables and so on, will those then be moved to some storage area or what will you do in those cases?
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on those. We, we have the ability to move them up away from the water table or water level. It got pretty high this last year and it actually barely reached the gravel. So it's what we can do in those instances is we can close that parking lot off, move the tables. And the river, river doesn't rise a foot in a day, but it rises pretty quickly. So we can stay on top of that. But yeah, we'll monitor that.
We'll be able to move them and then so we can, they don't get damaged from the water.
Correct, yeah. And we, we've had that problem before. I mean, that's being next to the East Fork of Lewis is, it tends to rise quickly.
It looks great down there. Give, give your staff a big kudos. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good report, man.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Again, Matt. So next on the agenda, we do have an ordinance this evening, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. An ordinance amending the city's twenty thirteen shoreline master program. And this evening, Mr. Ethan Spoo, the city contract city planner will be presenting. Ethan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. I'm just going to start off actually with an apology because as was being discussed in the pre-meeting chatter, I'm mostly responsible for the heft of the agenda packet tonight. So I'll try and walk you through the key points of the updated shoreline master program and make it as quick and painless as possible. I do have a short presentation. I'm going to share screens on that if everyone can see my screen. Thumbs up on the screen share. Okay, good. So. So the Shoreline Management Act is, is part of state law, R C W ninety fifty-eight. And it requires each jurisdiction in the state of Washington that has shorelines to have a shoreline master program and to keep it updated. And the updates are due every eight years. La Center last updated its master program in twenty thirteen. And that was what is called a comprehensive update. And so at that point in time, the city took its nineteen seventies era shoreline master program and completely overhauled it based upon some new science around known at loss of ecological functions of shoreline areas and, and basically got rid of the master program. So now here we are eight years later and this is the city's first periodic update under the, under the statute. So in case you're not familiar with S and Ps, most people aren't. They serve three primary purposes, protecting ecological functions of the shoreline, prioritizing water-oriented uses. Those are things like docks and shoreline trails, waterfront parks. And preserving and enhancing public access. And those are all important features of shorelines around the state of Washington as well as La Center's shorelines. So if you look at the map I'm showing you here on this particular slide, this is a map of La Center shorelines. You can see the city boundary in black. And so most of La Center shorelines are developed with residential uses along the north side of the East Fork of the Lewis River or are in a natural state or being used for recreational, recreational purposes like Pollock Park. So those are kind of the three main uses within La Center's shorelines. Single-family uses, even though that's not listed as one of the three primary purposes of, of shoreline master programs or the Shoreline Management Act, they are considered a priority use. So the state recognizes the need and the benefit of having waterfront residences and having people be able to enjoy waterfront property and, and views. So just to give you, bring you up to speed real quick on the process of updating this shoreline master program. We're a little bit more than a year into it and the city received a grant from the Department of Ecology last year for about $11,000 to conduct this periodic review. Staff began working on that periodic review back in early twenty twenty, making updates to the master program and coordinating with Ecology on those updates. And so there's kind of a list of steps here in, in front of you on the screen. I won't go through all of those, but that, that was most of twenty twenty, working on, on the master program, including five planning commission work sessions starting in September, then going into early twenty twenty-one. There was a planning commission public hearing in February on it. And then following that public hearing, there was a thirty-day joint ecology and city public notice issued, requesting any comments on the shoreline master program. That notice went out to all shoreline property owners as well as a whole host of state agencies. Following that thirty-day notice, Ecology issued what's called an initial determination. And so that was kind of their first formal review of the document, even though we had shared some drafts of the document with them earlier than that to help speed the process along. And they concluded that the shoreline master program meets the requirements of the, of the state law with some minor changes. And that's pretty typical when you go through the shoreline master program updates, the Ecology has a few other things that they, they want you to do. And I've included a letter in the agenda packet that you, that you may have seen from Ecology that was their initial determination with a list of, you know, roughly ten changes or so that they wanted to see, see made. So just a quick note on the public involvement that occurred for this project. As I said earlier, we noticed property owners and, and agencies, we did that twice. Once before the planning commission public hearing, we also did it before this city council public hearing. And there was a notice put in the paper prior to hearings as well as notices put in the paper prior to every planning commission meeting that we had. And then we did not receive any comments from the public, but Ecology was the only commenter. So the topics that got updated in the master program, there's kind of a list of them there on, on this particular slide. There's a couple of main points here for you. One is that the updates are being made primarily because they're required. There's very few optional updates or policy, policy options that, that were, that the master program was updated for, that was discussed with Planning Commission. There was some, and I'll talk about those in a little bit. But we did, in some cases, we were successful in making the master program more flexible than it is now, particularly in the case of non-conforming development. And W S P has updated, you know, a number of master programs across the state of Washington. And so we were able to bring that experience into this project. So I'll just hit on some of the key topics here on, on the following slides. So non-conforming development, if you don't know what that is, it is existing structures or uses that don't comply with current requirements. So anytime there, anytime there's a regulatory update, anytime the city updates its, its land use or development codes, sometimes you'll, you'll get the, one of the results will be non-conforming development. The master program's no different in this respect. However, they're really, the, the updates to the master program, in this case at least, aren't creating additional non-conformities. Sometimes jurisdictions will update their master program and change the setbacks that are required from the water or the critical area buffer widths. We're not doing that here. But there, but there's still non-conforming development on La Center shorelines that predates the city's adoption of master programs, houses that are older than the twenty thirteen master program update, for instance. So as I said, this is one of those areas that we've, we were successful in inserting additional flexibility for property owners in the shoreline master program. The, the current S M P or the old S M P, as I'm calling it here on this slide, really only allows for those non-conforming uses to be maintained and repaired. But it doesn't allow them to be expanded like the new shoreline master program will allow once it's adopted. And in addition, any structure that's damaged under the, the old S M P, up to a value of sixty percent of the fair market value could be replaced as long as it's rebuilt within a year. We were successful in making that a little bit more flexible so that even up to a hundred percent damage. So if somebody's house is flooded or it burns to the ground and it's located in shoreline jurisdiction, they can replace that house to its previous extents and rebuild it within, within two years. And they can even expand it some on the previous, on the previous footprint. Another major area of update in the S M P are critical areas. Critical areas are things like wetlands, streams, flood hazard areas, steep slopes and aquifer recharge areas. And so you might remember that back in early twenty twenty, the city updated its critical areas ordinance, which, which is contained in section, chapter eighteen three hundred of the municipal code. And that update was undertaken to comply with state requirements as well that the city's critical areas ordinance had to meet best available science. So one, one thing that we did in the S M P update then, and, and one thing we were required to do, the city was required to do was replace that, the critical areas provisions that are in appendix B of the S M P and replace those with the new critical areas provisions from the code. So those were just swapped, swapped out and, and the new provisions put, put in place in appendix B. And along with that, that went, going hand in hand with that was the deletion or, or the repeal of eighteen three hundred S that we're proposing to you tonight because eighteen three hundred S is also critical areas provisions, but they only apply in shoreline jurisdiction. But now that we're updating the critical area provisions in the shoreline master program and bringing those into appendix B, there's no longer a need for chapter eighteen three hundred S in the, in the city's code. So a lot of the deletions that you're seeing, especially in the appendix of the S M P, are eliminating redundant and duplicative standards between the S M P and the, and the city's code. And then one, one of the other major areas of update are the administrative provisions of the S M P. So the changes there and the, the administrative provisions are divided between chapters two and seven of the S, S M P. And so some of the changes that we made there were clarifying the role of staff. The hearings examiner and Ecology in the review process, there was some inaccuracies in describing who reviews what type of permits. We revised the permit filing procedures to comply with the current wax about what you need to submit to Ecology when you. what you need to submit to Ecology when you when La Center has reviewed a shoreline permit and and forwards it on to Ecology. And then there's some administrative provisions in appendix C of the current SMP. Those were deleted. That was another large chunk of text that got deleted because those duplicate what is located in chapter seven of the SMP. And in addition, it duplicates what's in the municipal code in section 18330. So again, we're trying to eliminate some of those redundancies and and duplications. So then what what chapter 18330 of the municipal code is, is it's currently the administrative provisions of the SMP. And so what we did when we when we deleted most of that, we left section 18330010 and revised it to simply adopt reference adoption of the new SMP. And then and then the rest of the provisions are contained in this chapter seven of the SMP. And so that means that we repeal, there were proposing that the city repeal 020 through through 100. So then the recommendations for you tonight are to conduct the public hearing. Take any public comments that you get and that and then approve the amended SMP and the associated code revisions that go along with that. And I have those here contained in in this motion. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
A very long read, actually, Ethan.
Did you read all of it?
Yeah, pretty close to most of it. I was looking in more curious on the dock side, you know, with all the construction of docks in there. Do we actually have any docks on that portion?
I don't think you do. Those are standard provisions that come from the wax. And so if somebody wanted to construct a dock, then those provisions would come into play. And we did have somebody a couple of years ago that requested or was starting to look into that process. So, you know, in that case, if somebody was going to do that, then those provisions would come into play. But I don't think there's any docks in the city that I that I know of.
Okay.
I believe down below our location, at least two.
Oh, really? Okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Ethan right now, I will go and open up the public hearing. For this ordinance, it's right now 7:23. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this shoreline master program update, please give us your name, address, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not my name is Ron Ostander, 1401 East Heritage Loop here in La Center. Let's just do a quick question. Can you give a specific example of how the this ordinance would be relevant?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody was if somebody was building a new single family residence, for instance, in shoreline jurisdiction, which is, I should have said earlier, is is 200 feet from the the ordinary high watermark of the Lewis River. So if somebody was building a shoreline residence, then it would come to play if they were building a dock, as I said earlier, the city built Pollock Park and it had to show how it was complying with its own shoreline master program. Really, any use that happens within that 200 foot zone would be required to comply with the shoreline master program.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, thank, good question. Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Okay, not hearing any. I'll close the public hearing at 7:25 and turn it back over to the city council for any further questions for Ethan or discussion?
Yeah, yeah, real quick, one more back to that dock, Ethan. That 22,500, is that just like a permit fee? Or what is that for construction to replace existing docks? Can you explain that to me? And the difference between that one and 11,000? Are those just fees or?
No, those aren't fees. Those are what are called exemption thresholds. So if you meet those thresholds, and I was going to go to that portion of the master program, but if you meet those thresholds, you don't have to go through the shoreline master program permitting process. And so I think what that section of the SMP says is that if you it may be here in the in my staff report table. One second here. Trying to remember if I stuck that part in there. I may not have, but but basically what's that?
It's the second bullet on page one. Adjust value exempt stock, dock, dock construction. Don't go up. Is that what you're looking for? The second one down?
Right, yeah. So if you if you have a replacement dock of equal or lesser footprint of an existing dock that's valued at 22,500 or less, you're exempt from having to comply with the shoreline master program permitting process. And then any other dock that's 11,200 or less. So it's really saying that you don't have to go get what's called a shoreline substantial development permit. You still have to show how you comply with the provisions of the master program, but you but you're exempt from having to go through the public notice process and the standard permitting that goes with the normally goes with the shoreline master program.
Okay, yeah, that explains it. I'll tell you why I was asking. And I keep getting drawn back to this because you know, I'd love to see the trails and such be expanded down there and the public parks, and then maybe a business of some sort coming in somewhere around there and being able to put a dock down there for like kayaks and such, you know, and I don't want to discourage people from expanding on those developments. That's why I was focusing on that side of it. Thank you.
Right, yep, that makes sense.
So any other discussion or questions this evening from the city council? Clerk, could you please put up the recommended motion again, please?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2021-08, amending the city's 2013 shoreline master program. Repealing the Center Municipal Code 18.300S, amending La Center Municipal Code 18.330.010 and repealing La Center Municipal Code 18.330.020 through 18.330.100 as part of a statutorily required periodic review and update of the shoreline master program.
It's been moved and seconded to ordinance 2021-08, amending the city's 2013 shoreline master program. And as recommended in this evening's staff report by the city planner. Again, this is an ordinance. Clerk, if I could, please get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bach?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2021-08 carries to approve unanimously. Thank you, council. And Ethan, I'd like to thank you, the WSP staff, for all your hard work and getting presented to the council this evening and working with the La Center planning commission and all the time and dedication from the planning commission as well. This is actually very heavy lift to get through. I know you've been working on it for a long time. I know you were also responsible for securing the grant to get this done. So I really appreciate all your hard work and efforts. Great job. Appreciate you getting this updated for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we have one item under new businesses, business this evening. It's an interlocal for Clark County Source Tracing and Microbial Identification. It's a resolution 2021-457. And Matt Jenkins will be presenting this evening. Matt?
Yeah, Mayor, council citizens. As the mayor said, this is the interlocal for Clark County Source Trace Microbial Identification. To give you a little background on it, Ecology began bacteria sampling and sampling in the summer of 2020 in the East Fork of the Lewis River. That was on top of sampling they did both in 2007 and 2017. Elevated bacteria levels were found in the East Fork Lewis River tributaries within La Center city limits. As follow up to Ecology's findings, La Center began their own illicit discharge detection and elimination investigation with a bacterial sampling plan in November, December of 2020. La Center also found elevated levels of fecal coliform at four sampling locations. There was one geometric mean exceedance and and all four sampling locations had at least one incidence of exceeding 320 CFU per 100 milliliters. The scope of work proposes that Clark County Public Works Clean Water Division will perform water sampling, collection, and analysis for identification of human and dog fecal DNA presence and quantity at predetermined sampling locations using quantitative polymerass chain reaction analysis. Testing also for E. coli and then optical brighteners as contracted service to the city of La Center. Little background on that. UPP CCR is the DNA testing. The E. coli looks for the presence of E. coli bacteria, which can be from warm-blooded mammals. And then optical brightener looks for detergents and household products that could mean a cross connection. Long story short, we've isolated it down with the help of both Public Works and the Sewer Department and their laboratory. We've isolated it down to two sources. It's mainly between 10th and 5th Street and runs right next to the PD. So the main thing is, is if we can, if we can identify what the DNA tracers are, that'll give us a direction to work. If it's dog, then it's public outreach. If it's human, then we're looking for cross connections and possibly improperly decommissioned septic tanks that we didn't know about that are 30 or 40 years old. So it's going to help us identify what the source is in a quicker, more efficient manner so we can get to the source of the problem. And the total cost that La Center Stormwater Utility will be $7,754. We set aside $15,000 in capital for this purpose, so it's going to take about half of that. My recommendation is that and city staff's recommendation is that council approved resolution 2021-457 for the for the interlocal for Clark County Source Tracing and Microbial Identification for IDDE project.
Matt, this is Doug. I've got a question. You mentioned that that testing will be for dog feces. Would that catch feces from other animals? I mean, is this a specific test? What if it's raccoon, for example? Can you, I'm trying, I'd like to know more about that.
Yeah, it'll come up as other. It's it's very, it's very specific markers and it's very expensive. So we went well-known markers in stormwater systems and La Center. We went with, you know, obviously human because we want to look for cross connections and then kind of source contamination there. And then dock because a lot of people don't realize that dogs contribute to a huge amount of bacteria in tributaries and streams. They don't pick up after themselves or after their animals. They think it's, you know, dog waste, but it actually is considerably bad for the water. So those are the two that we're going after initially. And then after that, we're going to expand if need be and continue to work backwards up the stream.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Matt, it says in your report here for it that it's going to happen three times. Is that it? Just the three times and it's done for the 7,500?
Yeah, three times. But we've, we've, yeah, it's it's expensive testing. It's highly sophisticated. And and actually, Clark County doesn't do it themselves. They go through a third party, but they already have the so we're getting their pricing because they've done a ton throughout Clark County. We've narrowed this down through through equal coliform testing, working with the Sewer Department and their laboratory. And we got to the four hottest hot spots, narrow that down to the two. And it's what we found is I think we found the area where the inlet water was really low, the the outgoing water was really high. So we've got it narrowed down to the section where it's being impacted.
Yeah, I read about stuff like this that they were using for finding COVID testing for that and feces. So pretty aware of that. I just, my my concerns are always privacy matters. So and if this is what you're testing for, this is, it sounds pretty legit to me.
Yeah, I I don't think we're violating the citizen's privacy here. I mean, this is a stormwater system. It's not so we're not looking for prescriptions or anything like that that could betray a neighborhood's confidence or anything. So.
Any other questions or discussion regarding this resolution?
Mayor, I move the council approved resolution 2021-457 for the interlocal for Clark County Source Tracing and Microbial Identification for the IDDE project.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2021-457. Clerk, if I could, please get a call vote.
Councilmember Bach?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much, Matt. Good report. Appreciate all your hard work on this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank Bronson for helping with the interlocal as well. So thank you. Very good. Appreciate it.
So that concludes our meeting for this evening, council. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. I hope you get out and enjoy the rest of this beautiful evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.